Good evening. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. The date is June 10, 2014. We are starting late because a special meeting ran over. The time is just about 10 to 8. This is meeting number 2014-19. Clerk Quinlan, please take the roll.
President Berry?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Alonichuk?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Carberry?
Here.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever.
Thank you. Item three on our agenda is public comments. We have one public commenter. It's John Volokakis, I believe, talking about item 14 on the agenda. And this is the water sewer. Can't read the writing too well, but how are you, sir?
All right, thank you.
And state your name and if you're an Oaklawn resident.
My name's John Volokakis, I'm an Oaklawn resident, 50-plus years. Continuing on with issues in the village about sewer and water, flooding, et cetera. I see on tonight's agenda there's a resolution to allocate, I believe it's been, I've heard is like $3.5 million to the sewer and water improvements over at the Tiff District, 111th Street. My question to the board, since they don't really put a lot on these agendas, is is this on-site or is this village property and the village's responsibility? I understand it's not. So I don't know if the kindness of our heart will give the development $3.5 million for, you know, something that either the village was unaware was going to be needed or possibly the developer, you know, was unforeseen by him and his, you know, architects, civil engineers, et cetera. I don't know where the problem came in, that, you know, the village is feeling obligated to pay $3.5 million, you know, to help them with their sewer and water problems when we have issues in the village already. $3.5 million ago, a long way in alleviating some of the antiquated systems we have here, possibly a couple detention structures, which, you know, I think everybody knows that attends these, that knows. You know, these are something that the village needs to stop all this flooding. So in the meantime, we're going to give $3.5 million to the development to help, you know, cause more problems in the system. So I'd like to know, you know, is this obligated under contract or the Tiff contract or anything else with the village? Or is this another deal, you know, something that wasn't disclosed with the developer? So I'd like to know, you know, and also, you know, where the $3.5 million is going to come from. We already have a budget that's, you know, in deficit as it is. So and again, I don't know, we don't have the property in 95th Street to sell again to make up more money in the budget. I don't know what assets we're going to sell to make our next budget. But in the meantime, we're just going to shell out another $3.5 million.
Okay, thank you, John. Larry, you were kind of waving to me, you'd like a chance to respond to that?
Certainly.
Okay.
Mayor and Board, and John, thank you for your question. Let me try to help you. Have you been to the site? And if you were at the site, John, you will see two very, very large retention ponds. Those ponds are really what you come up here and speak before the board on a regular basis about and asking the village to take on their responsibility and recognize the need. That was an asphalt parking lot back in 1976 when the shopping center was developed. And there wasn't any efforts to create a retention area. Matter of fact, it was a, it was an impervious surface asphalt parking lot, no landscaping, and corrugated metal pipes underneath the surface. So we, in a very responsible manner, have worked with our Metropolitan Water Reclamation District for years, a series of meetings with them. And when the plan to redevelop that property went to their agency for permitting, we, the village, per the contract, have an obligation. We're handling all the infrastructure improvements, with the exception of the developer's responsibility. If you notice, all the curbing, foundations, the construction of the buildings, the landscaping, any interior sewer, stormwater, water service connecting the commercial development that will rise, like the Mariano's and the buildings to follow, that's being built by contract by Hamilton Partners. So they had to go out and get a private loan, no subsidy, no involvement from the village, well in excess of $20 million, plus put their equity, their corporate equity, into building towards that property, matched with the village through the Tiff, acquiring properties, bearing the overhead utility lines, realigning, complying with IDOT requirements for turning lanes, deceleration lanes. But that's all in the agreement, scrutinized by the village's Tiff attorney, Matt Welch, done a very fine job. This board acted properly well over a year ago when the agreement was executed to bring Hamilton on board. So there's nothing mysterious, everything, every document's a public document, John. But if you look at those retention, it really have to go on-site. Now, the two retention ponds are separated because the bicycle path that goes through Wolf Wildlife will meander between those two retention ponds. Both retention ponds will be planted with species, plant species, that have been selected by our arborist, the village arborist, in concert with MWRD and the engineer for Hamilton. I think you'll be quite pleased upon the completion of the landscaping of the plants that are appropriate for a wetlands area. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item four, Eagle Scout project. Is Justin Aubin in the room?
Right here.
Justin, how did I miss you? Right in front of me. Hi, Justin, would you like to come to the podium?
Yes, I have some packages here.
Okay, we'll pass those out. Thanks. So, Justin, I want you to start by stating your name and then let us know if you're an Oaklawn resident.
My name is Justin Aubin and I am an Oaklawn resident.
Thank you.
So I'm a Boy Scout out of St. Linus Parish. And I have recently been pursuing my Eagle Scout rank. And I've always had a lot of respect for the veterans and what they do for us. So I thought it would be a good idea to use my project to help the veterans in some way. So that led me to talk to Mr. Bresnahan at the VFW. And he gave me a good idea for my project, which will be installing a new flagpole with a small retaining wall behind it and paper stones at the base in a half-circle type pattern. And the site I've chosen for this, I think it'll be really good, is across the street from the VFW in Oaklawn at the southwest corner of 52nd and Ural. And I've already talked to the VFW about this and they're all for it. And I think that this will not only give the VFW a good place to carry out flag ceremonies, but it'll also make the whole area look a lot nicer. And I think that'll benefit the whole community. Now, even though this project will benefit the VFW, the site I've chosen is on village property. So I'm looking for the approval of the village to use this project, this site for my project. Thank you.
How long will it take you to complete?
I'm planning to complete it by the end of September.
Wow. Does anyone have questions about this project? Okay, I'd like a motion to approve the use of village property for this worthy Eagle Scout project. Have a motion, please. Properly moved by trustee Quinlan, seconded and stereo. I'm going to give it to trustee Carberry. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. We're really looking forward to it. Excellent job. Item five on the agenda is the Green Team Design Recycle and Reusable Market Bag Contest Winners. Trustee Alonichuk, do you want to do a brief introduction and then I'll meet some folks in the podium?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Debbie Staffordgin and Lynn Harris, who have worked very, very hard as representatives of the Green Team. If you'd like to come up and present the awards. And thank you for your volunteerism.
So the Green Team put out a contest to the local high schools to come up with a green design for a recyclable and reusable market bag, shopping bag that you take shopping with you. So we have first, second, and third place winners for this competition. The third place winner was Alina Hernandez. She couldn't be here tonight, from Oaklawn Community High School. Our second place, and she gets a $25 check. Second place is Bobby Bergman. Bobby Bergman is from Oaklawn High School. His parents are here with him tonight. Come on up. Bobby gets a $50 check for second place. And the winning design, which is right here, is also from Oaklawn Community High School, and Mercedes Leon. Come on up. Not only does her design go on a recyclable, reusable bag, which will be given away at farmer's market and things like that, but she also gets a $100 check. Congratulations to all the winners.
Great job, everyone, thank you. Okay. Item, let's see, six on the agenda, Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Does anyone have a conflict with any item on tonight's agenda? Anything they want to disclose? Hearing none, we're going to move on to item seven. This is Approval of Meeting Minutes. For the Finance Meeting Minutes, 2014-01 dated May 27, 2014. They have a motion on item seven.
Motion to approve.
Properly moved by trustee Boarder?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Quinlan. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
And trustee Strite?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
And any of the contest winners, you're welcome to stick around, but if you don't want to, we won't be offended if you want to get out. No problem. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight is the Approval of the Meeting Minutes. The Approval of the Regular Meeting Minutes, 2014-16 dated May 27, 2014. They have a motion on item eight.
Motion to approve.
Properly moved by trustee Boarder?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Quinlan. Any discussion on item eight? Hearing none, please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're moving on to item nine. This is a motion to approve after the Board of Trustees' in executive session on May 13, 2014, reviewed for release of closed meeting minutes from April 10, 2008, June 14, 2010, all closed meeting minutes for 2011, 2012, and 2013, that the need for confidentiality still exists. May have a motion on item, yes?
Could I, could I request that the board table this? We still owe you some information on some of the minutes, which we'll have for you at the July.
Do you want to postpone then? Or take?
Postpone.
Postpone.
If you can postpone it, yeah. If you can postpone until July.
Okay. So I need a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Properly moved by trustee Boarder, seconded by trustee Alonichuk. I think I heard. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Alonichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes to postpone.
So now we're on item 10 on the agenda, New Business by Village Trustees. Trustee Desmond, what's new in District One, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to give everybody a quick update on our recent home improvement program where we offered free permits to Oaklawn residents for two weeks in May. Last year, we issued 112 permits in that time period. This year, we issued 205 permits, so almost double. And I was talking to our clerk, Jane Quinlan, actually, about this last week. And we both remarked on how great the neighborhoods looked and how much pride and work the people of Oaklawn put into their homes. So it was great to be able to help them out and give a little bit, a little back to these hard-working people who are so proud of where they live. Our Fourth of July Parade is just around the corner and promises to be another great event, with many of the participants from last year back and also some new ones. And for fans of the TV show The Walking Dead, we may even have some zombies walking in the parade this year. But most importantly, it is an occasion for friends and family to get together and celebrate the founding of this great country and honor those brave men and women who, almost 240 years ago, declared a free nation for all its people. The parade will begin at 10:00 a.m. on July 4 at 51st Avenue and 95th Street and proceed westbound to 55th Court. And lastly, there will be a First District Community Meeting and a First District Neighborhood Watch Meeting on Wednesday, June 18, at 6:30 p.m. in this room. So I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent. District Two, trustee Alonichuk.
Just one quick reminder, the Oaklawn Bike Tour is going to be Saturday, June 21, about another week and a half away. At our meeting today, I think they said we had 125 people already pre-registered. So the first 200 to register will receive a free tee-shirt. And you can register online by going to the village website. And don't forget, there's still time to register. You will get a nice giveaway bag that'll have a water bottle in it, the design from our winner, our first-place winner, with a beautiful tee-shirt and a nice leisurely tour around the village of Oaklawn on a bicycle. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. And what's going on in District Three, trustee Strite?
Well, just in conjunction with the report on the bicycle tour, just like to remind everybody that, of course, schools have recently all let out for the summer. So there are a lot more kids out there every day, walking around and riding bicycles. So I just ask everybody to be extra careful with the kids out in the, out in the neighborhoods. That's all I have this evening.
Wonderful. And District Four, trustee Boarder?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, are we ready for that PowerPoint presentation? At our previous meeting, we all agreed that we will create links on our Oaklawn webpage to our personal campaign financing reporting to the state of Illinois. And just as a matter of education, I asked Tom if he would just give us a brief outline of how you'll go about linking to those sites. And I asked him to use me as the example. But however, every trustee and every elected official does have a similar link. I'll let you, I'll let you take it from here, Tom, narrative-wise, too.
Okay, narrative-wise, under every, under every elected official under the work of Oaklawn, if you go to their, their section on the page, there's a State Board of Elections' contribution information. And if you click on that, it will bring you up to their, their section. It looks like, there. We thought we had them today. They were down for a little bit today. Appears that we have, they went down again.
Well, basically, if you click onto that link, it'll bring you to the state of Illinois Campaign Disclosure website. And from that site, you can navigate contributions given to the elected officials, expenditures, and donations that they've made, okay, to other elected officials. A sense of true transparency, I think the people that cast the votes for the people of the village of Oaklawn ought to at least share who gives them the money to be an effective trustee and how they spend that money. In addition to that, I'd like to piggyback on trustee Desmond's public meeting. I will be having a meeting, too, of my district. I've changed the location to Salem United Church. The previous meetings were at the Oaklawn Park District and we only had standing room only. So this is a larger room. I hope I can accommodate more people. And this meeting will take place on June 26 at 7:00 p.m., again, at Salem United Church, which has 9701 South Custer. And there will be three topics of discussion at that meeting. We'll have presentations on the business development here in Oaklawn, particularly what's going on on 111th Street. The Chief of Police or his representative will be doing a community safety talk. And we will have a presentation on Everbridge Notification System. And I'd like to extend an invitation to everybody to attend that meeting. Again, June 26, 7:00 p.m., Salem United Church. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. How's District Five, trustee Quinlan?
Just one item, actually. I don't know if it's the weather or what, but lately, I've been getting a lot of calls about renters that are being, you know, basically crappy neighbors, you know, and which I have a real issue with. I feel for the people that are living by renters that are not caring about the community and the people that live around them. And I kind of started some discussions with Pat and with Larry in regards to, you know, some of the different things. One, it was suggested to me, actually by a resident, and said, there are other communities that if any person wants to rent in our community and they are convicted felon, that they are not allowed to rent in our, in Oaklawn. I think that's kind of a no-brainer, and I know our attorney is looking into that. The second one, only because it does seem to be that some of these issues are with people that have pit bulls. And, you know, in particular, this one house that I'm having an issue with has a pit bull with no fence. And so the dog is being tied up all day. And there are times when the dog is not on leash and runs around, which, of course, scares, you know, the heck out of the people that are in the neighborhood. And again, it's not okay. And so my question was to our attorney and to Larry, that why are we allowing people to bring in an animal, which isn't really fair to the animal, if there is no fence and it's going to be chained up the whole time, let alone a pit bull? But why can a renter come into Oaklawn with a, you know, where the property has no fence? To me, that doesn't make sense. I think that we need to see if we can, that's a restriction, that if renters bring in an animal, there has to be a fence on the property. Again, to me, that's kind of a no-brainer and it just, again, it goes with the safety of our neighborhood. Bottom line, I just really feel strongly that we need to have a stronger vetting process, you know, the owners of these properties, whether they're companies or just regular, you know, people that own a house and they're renting it. We just need to make sure that, you know, the people that are coming into Oaklawn, because we are paying taxes, we care about our community, and we want to make sure that the people that are renting here understand that and are going to be good neighbors and an asset to our community. So I don't know if that is something that we discuss at community at large, that there's ideas thrown out there as to how this vetting process could, can we even do it, number one? You know, can we just tighten things up a little bit? Like I said, I think it's, the weather's nicer, people are out, you know, but it's the disrespect of, you know, the neighbors I have a real problem with.
Pat, do you want to just respond?
Absolutely. Excellent point, trustee Quinlan. As to the dog issue, we do have an ordinance. In fact, I, we work on it. Yeah, we have a good one. We have a pretty aggressive one.
I know, we did work on it, but it wasn't specific to can renters bring in a dog, you know, to a property that there's no fence.
Sure. Renters, homeowners, there should be a fence there. And I believe, I'll double-check our ordinance, but if you're going to have a dog, you need to have a fence or there's an alternative, that's a.
Invisible line.
Yeah, wired-in type thing. But if you have neither control set up for a dog, that's a violation of our code and it should be cited. And again, to your point as well, that doesn't mean people should be chaining up a dog or caging up dog, because we do have, we have animal.
Well, a pit bull, that's just going to get that animal angry and.
Right. And we have animal cruelty prohibitions as well that go to that. We have been working with some of the rental companies that are in town, trying to get them to tighten up their standards. We're continuing to work on that. And I'd be happy to, as you said, we've talked and we're already looking into it. And the other thing, we do have a landlord-tenant ordinance as well, which is commonly referred to, which a lot of municipalities have. Again, that's not a pre-rental, that's kind of a, you know, what are the obligations of a landlord, what are the obligations of a tenant once you're in? And that forbids crime, if you will, happening. So that's something we should also be strictly enforcing. So we do have some tools and look forward to working to strengthen them, I guess.
Madam Mayor?
Trustee Desmond actually was trying to get my attention.
Yeah. I agree with trustee Quinlan, and I've had some calls on that as well, and we're actually going to be discussing that in our Neighborhood Watch program. But I think one of the best tools we have is that ordinance we passed, that $10,000 bond. I mean, we should be putting the pressure on the, on the homeowner to keep his renters in line. You know, I mean, we can have maybe some type of a staggered effect, you know?
They have, for violations of our landlord-tenant ordinance, they're, they're finable, they're adjudicatable, you know, the whole, we don't really tie into that bond. That bond is tied.
But we could.
That bond's, it's tied into the improvements within the home. You're, you're putting up a bond to do, when they want to do work, to make sure that it's up to village code.
Yeah, but I mean, this is a neighborhood issue.
Agreed. And, and that's what our landlord-tenants, tenant ordinance is supposed to do. There's, you know, if we're getting police calls out to a house, you know, there are violations of that ordinance that we should be writing. So, and again, the idea of that is not only just the tenant, it's also to keep the landlord accountable.
Yeah, let him do the vetting.
Accountable as well.
Trustee Alonichuk, real quick?
Well, one of the powerful parts of that responsible landlord-tenant ordinance is, number one, the property has to be registered. So if you have residents that don't know if a property next to them is a rental property or not a rental property, let the village know so we can check into it. After it's a registered property, and, and the ordinance works whether it's registered or not, but it makes it a lot easier for us to compile the database of the registered properties in the village. Then after that, there's a nuisance clause in there. If there are call for police three times to a home, the way the ordinance reads is that there's a meeting between the owner, the tenant, and a representative from the village of Oaklawn to notify them of the nuisance that had happened and let them know what's going to happen. And this ordinance is very strong that it gives us, the village, the ability that after having hearings, that the tenant can actually be evicted from the house by village ordinance. And that should help a landlord who wants to be above-board and honest. But I, I always tell residents, if you're in question if a house is a rental property or not, give me a call or give someone at the village a call. If you're having issues, call 911. Once we get three calls to the police department, then the ordinance kicks in for the next part of the abatement.
Actually.
Okay, trustee Quinlan?
Just to address what you just talked about, part of my issue with this is that a renter, there have been calls for police. And when the police got there, they're, you know, the parties were broken up or whatever, and the neighbors were fearful to file a formal complaint or give their name. Since the police did not formally see that incident, therefore, it's a he said, she said. And if they're not going to file a formal complaint, then that is not considered one of the notices.
Right. But you, you have to be able to, if you call something and you need.
And so the residents do have to understand that you kind of need to call the police, don't approach the neighbor yourself, that, you know, that's a, you know, a big thing. But you have to kind of be willing to step up to the plate and be willing to file a complaint.
And in our, it's, it's our neighborhoods and we have to be able to give our staff the tools to be able to do their jobs. And I know it's a sticky wick to have to deal with, but I will tell you that in the areas where residents have stayed together and wanted to make sure that the right thing was done, it's worked very well.
Trustee Boarder?
Just one more comment to Alex's comment. Fast off, the vast majority of the renters are good, good residents in the village of Oaklawn. I have one right now that had the three calls and the responsible tenant is evicting them. But the eviction process takes more time than you would really like, okay? You may be looking at six months, okay, before the sheriff actually comes and removes them from the house. Just point that out, because I am going through that right now.
Right. But at the time that we put that ordinance together, trustee Quinlan and trustee Strite were all part of it. We tried to get the best language that we could because we're trying to give the landlord who's doing the right thing the opportunity to get rid of a tenant, because he probably wants to get rid of them a lot quicker than, than anybody could imagine. The issue comes down to even with the tough languages we have there. The issue comes down to, even with the tough languages we have there, you have to let the due process go through, and that's the frustrating thing for the residents that live around that and have to deal with it.
Trustee Strite?
I just wanted to add, maybe possibly to help short-circuit the process about the dogs and the fences. The attorney mentioned that there should be a fence required. We have an ordinance on the books that's called the Dangerous Dog Ordinance, and that absolutely specifically requires not only a fence, but it has a height requirements and size requirements. So we could enforce that tomorrow.
Thank you. Trustee Quinlan? Back to you, sorry for the-
No, that's all good conversation, and that's the end of my report.
Okay, we're moving on to District 6.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Carberry?
I wanted to thank Justin Alvin. Great job, Justin. Takes a lot of guts coming up. It's going to beautify that corner as well. I met, how long has it been? Two years? A year, a couple of years ago. We were on the same team, Justin made the All-Star team at our rival, St. Linus.
We rule.
Yeah. While we were on the same, we were on the same team in All-Star, yeah, but we had, we had a lot of fun. Good to meet you, it's good to see you again, and thank you very much for this. One other, one other note, I wanted to thank Katie Meyer and Kamelah Theterson and Larry for following up. We have a couple businesses in my district that were, that needed to be taken care of. They had some power outages over the, in the six-week period, they had about three outages. Katie, Larry, I don't know if you got, were copied on the email, but followed up, and all the corrective action will be done by the end of the month, and some's been done already, it's in process now, so thanks again. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Lots of good stuff going on at Oaklawn. Number 11, Village Managers Report. Larry, I'm going to turn the floor to you. Item A is update on Southwest Conference of Mayor's Cicero Avenue Corridor Study.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and Justin. Outstanding project. As we talked with Village Clerk Jane Quinlan and also with the VFW, that corridor there has a lot of history and a lot of influence, thanks to our veterans, particularly from Oaklawn and the Johnson Post there. So I think you picked an excellent location with over 1,000 commuters a day who walk in that area, going back and forth from the train to the parking. Whether they see the 911 memorial, or they see your project that's underway, it's a tribute to their efforts in the community, first responders and veterans, so thank you very much.
Looking for sponsors too.
And you're looking for sponsors, and I'm sure you're going to get some sponsors based on your fine presentation. I'd like to give recognition, I know the mayor's going to speak to this, and I know Alex, through his efforts to the Green Team, to Debbie and Lynn. Debbie, you also serve as the President of the Cal Sag Trail, and although I am lamenting that I could not be there with you, I knew that you were in good hands, you had a wonderful day, and I salute your efforts. That is a tremendous project. But most important is what John here talked about, is how we can link the Wolf Wildlife Preserve area in this community with our bicycle trail and walkway through the undeveloped St. Cashmere Cemetery and on to Alsop. And as we've talked, for an old man like me, that's a 23-minute bicycle path from Cooper's Hawk Soon-to-be Restaurant to the Cal Sag, and it's a beautiful ride when you get to Alsop. Now, the sidewalks put in are great, and the corridor committee met last Wednesday, and we talked about the importance that that cemetery needs to remain open space, prairie, bicycle path, and John, you could not have a better location for stormwater detention to serve the southern, southeast part of Oaklawn and those neighborhoods. So we have elected officials on MWRD, we have a fine consultant, Terry O'Brien, former President of MWRD, who's working on it. With your efforts, efforts of the Green Team, I'm convinced we're going to be successful. It's not going to be easy, but you're paving the way, so I thank you for that. And John, I would, I would note also, you've got a triple header tonight. You've got this discussion, the Cicero Corridor, you have the retention ponds built at Stony Creek Promenade, and Roman numeral 15, which this board is going to take up, is the exact project with Trustee Quinlan and I discussed with you after last week's meeting, and we already have it on the agenda. And that is a project that the General Assembly just last week passed and put on the governor's desk, approval for MWRD can get involved with local projects like stormwater detention along the corridor, 103rd between Cicero and Central. So that's a pretty exciting project, and I know this board, and particularly the Public Works Committee through the years, has been an advocate of that project getting underway. The next item is, is an unfortunate one. We experienced a structural stormwater pipeline failure. That pipeline was installed, the permit applicant was the village circa 1972. I've shared with this board a lot of concerns I have about that project that was implemented in 1972. I won't go over the details, other than to tell you that we're not done. There are other issues with that project. We replaced 100 feet of a very, very thin-walled corrugated metal pipe that does not have a long life on it, with a concrete, reinforced concrete pipe, which will be an improvement. That is a very, very large pipe to use metal, about six by 10 feet, huge. And the wall was very thin, and much to my surprise, that pipeline was bolted together, where the top section, the side section, and the bottom section was, which was in a kind of a flat construction to convey water better, but deteriorate easier, was bolted together in a very, very thin specification. So based on reports from other parts of the country, the likelihood of that pipe failing when it did is pretty much in line with other states have experienced where this product has been used. Why it was used, I don't know. We'll continue to do diligence on that. We've been in touch with the Hilton. We work well with the Hilton. I know a couple trustees were out in the field. I appreciate you going out and looking at it, and I'm sure if you went out there today, very busy day at Hilton, you wouldn't even know anything happened. Great repair work by our Public Works Department, CDM, who sent a structural engineer quickly on the site in Aries to repair that, and resurfaced the parking lot, lined the parking lot, so that there was minimal disruption for the business at Hilton. And I know that General Manager Rick Harmon was very appreciative of the work. So thank you, Public Works, and thank you, CDM. The last item I have, you know, Mayor and Board, is today was a little bit rainy, but up to this point, we've had a lot of great weather. And I will report to you that the economic interest in Oaklawn is at a very extreme high level. There's a lot of interest looking at a lot of sites. Economic development does not happen overnight. You don't go to Costco and order a project, takes tremendous risk, it takes private sector investment, it takes cooperation from banks. Steve Raddus is your Economic Development Coordinator, is doing a great job, got a lot of balls in the air, all positive. But proof and pudding is if you look at the agenda for this Thursday's Architectural Review and Design Committee chaired by John Benoit and wonderful residents who serve as volunteers. That board has a wonderful agenda, and if you look at some of the applicants who are submitting either new construction for buildings or merely for signs, you can see that they are looking at what Tim Desmond says, what happens when we adopt this Cicero Corridor Plan, or we adopt the 95th Plan like this board recently did. I can tell you that we are getting response from the private sector. They're looking at that plan, they're upping their investment in the community. Midwest Bank, they're coming in for signage, you see the construction underway, they're doing an outstanding job for that development. I thank Midwest Bank for that. So my report to you, President and Board, is the fruits of your efforts through the, through these years are really paying off, and they're very, very strong.
Excuse me. Larry, did you mention, were you looking for sponsorship or a fundraiser, or what do you have going on with the project?
Yeah, for the flagpole, we're, we need donations because it costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
Can you repeat what he's saying, Mike, so the people who might watch it at home can hear?
He needs money.
So if someone, if someone wanted to donate, how would they find out?
How do we do that, Justin? Do you want to come up, Justin, real quick?
Justin, we can give them my name to send the checks to.
For the donations, we haven't really gone that much into it, but you can probably contact the VFW about it.
Okay.
Because they already offered to do some kind of-
Do you know how much it's going to cost?
The one we're looking at right now is around $900.
Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe we'll work together with the VFW and-
Have a fundraiser.
And have a fundraiser over there, maybe, huh?
Yeah, that's what we're looking into right now.
Okay.
Is that 900 for the whole, for everything?
Yes, for the whole poll.
Would you like to help develop some projects in Oaklawn?
It's a good price. Thanks.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Okay, Larry, back to you.
Thank you.
Anything else? You're done?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item 12, this is ordinance 14-1936, prevailing wage ordinance, may have a motion on item 12, please.
Motion approved.
Properly moved by Trustee Quinlan.
Second.
Seconded by Carberry, or Trustee Carberry. Any discussion? Please take the vote. Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 13 is a little bit of a novel to read, bear with me. It's ordinance 14-1937, in ordinance of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, continuing the regional water system and providing for improvements and extensions thereto, and borrowing to pay the costs thereof, providing for the Oaklawn Retail Waterworks and Sewage System to purchase water from the regional water system, providing for the sale and delivery of water from the regional water system pursuant to a long-term water sale, purchase and service agreements for the local system, and also with the villages of Chicago Ridge and Payless Park, Illinois, and the city of Payless Hills, Illinois, authorizing the execution and delivery of a water sale, purchase, and service agreement by and between said regional water system, and Oaklawn Retail Waterworks and Sewage System, and also with said municipalities, and amending ordinance number 132271, and certain provisions of the long-term water sale, purchase, and service agreement authorized therein, such agreement being by and among the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, and the villages of Mokina, New Lennox, Orland Park, and Tinley Park, Illinois, and the city of Oak Forest, Illinois, and authorizing the execution and delivery of said agreement. May have a motion on this monstrous ordinance. Properly moved by Trustee Carberry.
I second everything you say.
Seconded by Trustee Vorder. Do we have any discussion on item 13? Please take the vote. Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're moving on to 14. This is Resolution 14-1938, a resolution authorizing an allocation from the Water and Sewer Fund pertaining to water and sewer system improvements at 111th and Cicero. May have a motion on item 14, please.
Motion approved.
Properly moved by Trustee Carberry.
Please second.
Seconded by Trustee Vorder. Any discussion here?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, Trustee Strite?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think that, I appreciate, again, the resident who came up and discussed his concerns about water and sewer issues throughout the village. I think those are very serious concerns that have been well documented over the years. And you would think that any money that we take in through the Water and Sewer Funds would be used to improve the water and sewer systems for the residents, for the community. Now, the agreement with the developer that we're specifically addressing here tonight provides that it is the developer's obligation to make all improvements, including the water, sanitary, and sewer mains and lines. It appears that based on a review of the agreement, that the Village of Oaklawn does not have an obligation to spend $3.6 million toward the water and sewer project costs either. In November, this village fired 20 911 operators because it was supposed to save money. We have trouble providing basic services. We have talked about further cuts, and I'm told that the mayor has met or will meet with each department, telling them that more cuts are on the way. Yet, we are looking at a resolution that states, "The President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Oaklawn hereby authorize the allocation of an amount not to exceed $3,637,064 from the Water and Sewer Fund to total project costs, to total project costs, not anything specific, but to anything." This board recently approved the payment of $1.6 million to bury power lines on this site, which they weren't obligated to do either, but they stated that they were. And now we're paying another $3.6 million. The obvious question is, what are the priorities of this board? Water and sewer fund money is money that could help solve the flooding problems of people throughout the village, and instead, we're choosing to give it to a developer. We have told our residents that we can't afford fire department, fire department personnel, police personnel, and even though the police chief, the fire chief, excuse me, recently reported that this was the worst year in fire-related deaths in the history of Oaklawn, we have failed to increase the number of police officers, even though we need more patrols. When we spend $3.6 million for a developer, we are telling our residents very clearly that public safety is not our priority.
Thank you.
And I will be opposing this.
Okay. Larry, I assume you have a few comments?
Yeah, I'll just make, I'll just make one brief comment with the introductory part of that presentation. Although I wasn't contacted by any board members, since this agenda became public and was distributed last Friday, I do check with legal counsel in advance of the meeting on substantive items of this issue. Matt Welch is our TIF attorney, and the item before you is perfectly in line and correct with the development agreement that you passed. Once again, the board voted to bury the lines, you can argue the pluses or minus, I can argue volumes of why that's the right decision. Regarding the building of the retention ponds, I would argue that that also is a long-term wise decision on the part of the board from an environmental and a stormwater perspective, but I would also argue aesthetically and the quality of life in that particular part of the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
Yes.
I'd just like to add, it's, you know, it's our understanding that pursuant to the agreement and in conjunction with Attorney Welch, the village is responsible for the detention that's going to be put out there, and that's what this allocation is at. If I vaguely worded with project costs, that wasn't my intent, that, you know, our responsibility in preparing this was an allocation for the detention, which is village responsibility under the agreement, as far as I understand.
And it's a percentage, correct? We're not paying for all of the detentions, our portion of it. Am I understanding that correctly?
Larry, do you recall?
We've asked for a specific percentage based on the detention area that I received from Hamilton Partners of 3.9 acres of the 26.91 acre site. That came from Hamilton, it's based on a percentage, and it's, we asked for a specific dollar amount. And the fact of the matter is, in the ground lease, we are responsible for detention and the burying of the lines under Exhibit G and Exhibit H.
Thank you, very good. I'm going to call the vote. Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
No.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on item 15. This is Resolution 14-1939. This is resolution 14-1939, a resolution approving a Phase 1 professional engineering services agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and White Engineering pursuant to the reconstruction of 103rd Street from Cicero Avenue to Central Avenue. May have a motion on item 15.
Motion approved.
Properly moved by Trustee Quinlan, seconded by Trustee Carberry. Any discussion here?
Just a comment.
Yes.
Um, I just want to let this board know, um, this is super important to District 5. We have massive flooding issues. This work, when completed, is going to help with that, it's going to increase the capacity for stormwater, so I'm definitely asking for your support on this.
Yeah. It's exciting to see these three things on the agenda with, with 111th and Cicero, the, the water there, the detention, the possibility of the cemetery and 103rd Street. In District 5, I know that this will be huge, huge. So-
Madam Mayor, I just want to add that this took over six years of work to get that done, so.
Yeah.
Kudos to everyone who's worked on it.
Yeah. Okay, let's call the vote on this one, please.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Elanichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, 16, is resolution, excuse me, 14-1940. This is a resolution approving a professional engineering service agreement pertaining to the booster station and transmission main improvements project between the Village of Oaklawn and CDM Smith Incorporated. May have a motion on this item. Properly moved by Trustee Elanichik?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Desmond. Any discussion here? Please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Elanichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we're on item 17 now. This is resolution 14-1941, a resolution authorizing the purchase of granite from Illinois Brick to the complete, to complete the Village of Oaklawn 9/11 Memorial. May have a motion on 17. Properly moved by Trustee Carberry, seconded by Trustee Vorder. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, Trustee Strite.
Thank you, Mayor.
First of all, the 911 memorial is, is an inspiring addition to our community, without a doubt. When the memorial was first announced, we were told by the Rotary Club and its members, including our own Mayor Sandra Berry, that it would be funded totally by the Rotary and private contributions. The past village board was never consulted about the project, and the village manager unilaterally entered into contracts without board approval or discussion. I had asked for records regarding the memorial and was stonewalled. I asked for an audit that was conducted by the Department of Justice and was never provided the document. Recently, I read a report from our federal lobbyist in which it became apparent that the village used drug forfeiture funds on the 911 memorial without board approval. We also learned that the Department of Justice denied that use. Now, I see that the taxpayer-funded lobbyist and our attorney have been trying to get the Department of Justice to reverse that position. I asked the village manager for all correspondence pertaining to the project. I never received a letter from the Department of Justice or the audit as requested. In fact, I FOIA'd that months ago and was told it didn't exist. And now, I'm being asked to vote on spending more drug forfeiture money on this project. Where is the transparency when we enter into contracts without approval, use drug forfeiture money illegally, refuse to share village documents with the entire board, and then come back and ask for board approval to use more funds without providing the documents? Drug forfeiture funds come from drug arrests, and the police have the right to civilly seize property that is used in the facilitation of selling narcotics. It is a terrific law that provides law enforcement with more funds to fight drug dealers. This board is being asked to divert money from this fund for the monument. At the very least, we should all have access to the same information before we make a decision. We have two issues here. The first is, can drug forfeiture funds be used for this purpose? The Department of Justice said no, and apparently, there has been a policy decision made by someone other than this board to try to overturn that decision through lobbying the congressman. The second issue is, does this board wish to divert drug enforcement money to pay for the monument? The board never voted to spend taxpayers' money on the monument in the first place. The board never voted to send, to spend drug forfeiture money on the memorial either. This administration loves to toss around the word transparency, but when it comes to real, open, and honest government, this administration is failing the people of Oaklawn. I support the memorial, and I would love, I would love to honor those that have been touched by the events of 9/11, but the actions on the part of this administration are wantonly insulting to the idea of transparency and the freedom that the memorial represents. Thank you.
Is that all your prepared statement, Trustee Strite?
Well, I have more, if you'd like to hear it.
Okay.
I think that sums it up pretty nicely, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item?
Actually-
Go ahead.
Trustee Quinlan?
I, I, I do agree with Trustee Strite. When this, when, you know, it's fabulous, I wish Oaklawn had a lot of money that we could just give towards, towards this, but the, when this memorial was first talked about, absolutely, I remember that there were not going to be any funds from the Village of Oaklawn. The taxpayers were not going to be paying for it, it would be private donations and the Rotary Club. And then, you know, I'm hearing, you know, throughout this process, I've heard more and more money being spent from the village, and now, more money is being asked, again, not saying this isn't a worthy cause, but it's wrong. I mean, this is not what we were initially told, so-
Mayor, if I could-
Um, yeah, and, and-
Again-
And, and Trustee Desmond, I think is-
Yeah, I mean, can, can I say something? I thought I would never see today that sworn politicians, sworn to uphold the Constitution, that flag would actually deny the 9/11 memorial to the men and women who died in 2001 in September.
Not denying it, you have a memorial-
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm going to control the meeting, we're going to have one, one person speak at a time. Trustee Desmond, you have the floor.
It's a disgrace.
The issue's processed.
Be ashamed of yourself.
Sure, for his total.
Okay, order, please, order. Village Manager Larry, I think you had something to say, and then I have something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. And I clearly remember being up there that evening, because I was president of the Rotary Club at the time, and I was happy to present to this board a partnership that the Rotary Club of Oaklawn, I think we had 22 members, I don't quite recall at the time, Mayor Berry, but a small club that said, "We will raise the money to bring in a world-class sculptor, Eric Blom," which we did, and not only raised the money for his fees, but raised from many, many other groups, and in-kind contributions from labor, from police, from fire, from welders, from a steel company from Skokie, Illinois. It's just a wonderful, wonderful project that, when it's all said and done, in-kind contributions and work from our public works, work from our Oaklawn Park District, our Oaklawn Park District did an outstanding job. I could not salute the crew that formed the, of the walls, poured the concrete, donated from Ozinga Concrete, I mean, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars were put into this project? Mead Electric, I could go on and on. The woman at our Lutheran Church who, who baked the cakes and the pies, and just, just wonderful, wonderful folks. Great community project. What is before you tonight, if you look at the text prepared by the village attorney, is to take monies from the parking lot fund. Our parking lot fund is used to maintain the public areas around our commuter lots and our parking lots on a regular basis. The balance in the fund is close to $300,000, I believe. Finance Director Hannigan will verify that and answer any financial questions you may have. We're looking to transfer $34,000. That's what's before you, that's the vote. Now, if I could briefly, segue to discussion of forfeiture funds. Let me make it pretty clear here, particularly for the young people in the back room, I'm glad you're here. You've heard a lot tonight about environment, let me help you out about democracy in this country and about how we govern. We govern at the local level, the county level, the state level, and then to the federal government in Washington DC. Everything I've been taught, professionally taught in school, is the government that governs the best is closest to the people. The men and women sitting up here that you and your parents elect when you have the fortunate chance to be old enough to vote, they represent you, you can pick up the phone, you can come here to your village hall, you can walk here, you can bicycle, or you can go to your neighbor who happens to be a trustee and ask him what's going on with that project, or why haven't you taken care of this problem, or fix the street light, like I heard a gentleman earlier, whatever. You can get to them. The farther you go up the line, it's more difficult. Now, we get to forfeiture funds. Why am I talking about that? We have a US Department of Justice, and the US Department of Justice has guidelines. Let me repeat that, guidelines. Respectfully, Chief Villanova was the police chief at the time, a very creative, good police chief, like Chief Murray, who was fouled in his footsteps, and he reached out to police club and with Chief Sheets, our fire club, our fire union, our police union, everybody cooperated, and we said, "We're using taxpayers' dollars to get the bad guys, seize their assets and property, build up a fund of $1 million." Wouldn't it be appropriate to use a small amount of that to put the final touch on the walls, which is a granite cap? If you go out to the field, any of you have seen the park, you'll see granite curbing. Those curbing were, were bored into and pinned with steel by a volunteer. A volunteer who was a mason and had the skill and the talent, much more important than the cost of the product, was the hands and the skills of that Oaklawnian who made that effort. And I can go on and on with those volunteers who put it together. Now, in this particular case, respectfully, we went to the federal government, we said, "It was our taxpayers' dollars to put police into the field, okay, embed our police officers, and we got our share of seizing the bad guy's assets, so did the county, so did the state, and so did the federal government." So, we said to the US Justice Department, "Ladies and gentlemen, we've read the guidelines." Our auditors, McGladrey, very fine, prominent law firm, represents a lot of municipalities, private clients, they've read the guidelines. It's a proper use of the funds, please let us apply that to the memorial, which has all these wonderful local contributions. Nope, you can't do that. Not a really clear explanation. We kept that dialogue, and then, I won't repeat what was said on the phone from somebody who I've never met in my life in Washington DC, but much like we hear about on television every night, I certainly wasn't pleased as a taxpayer what the response was. So, we have done what governance is about. We have gone to Washington DC through the people who we elected, a congressman and two senators, and said, "Will you please help the Village of Oaklawn get clarity, and whatever happens, as long as we're fairly treated, we will live by that." That's all this is about. What you're asked to do tonight is to use the monies from the parking fund. In the event that the US Justice Department changes their position with the help of our elected officials, we'll come back to you. I'm hopeful they do. In my career, I've seen the United States Army Corps of Engineers change their position, I've seen the United States Coast Guard change their position, and I now have seen wonderful community projects in communities I've served that were driven by volunteer citizens who had common sense, gave back to their communities, and reached out. Now, let's talk about the Veterans Memorial at, at, at our Village Green. What a wonderful memorial. Has anybody looked at it lately? Have you seen the concrete? Have you seen the condition? Have you seen two consecutive years of public works after particularly bad winters, fixing the cracks and doing their best, skillfully, using the monies? But guess what? That whole plaza needs to be repaired. And guess what? We're not going to ask the veterans to repair the, the concrete in the plaza, they worked their, their hard-out assembly to put the granite, put the names of the men and women who fought for this country in there so they can be honored. That's what this is all about. You work with community groups, you work as a municipality to better your community. The library that has the artwork, the relief on 95th Street on the south facade, they went out and raised support for that wonderful, world-class artwork that is viewed every single day if you're walking or going by in a car. That's what the 911 memorial is about. It's in a park, it's on village property, and the commitment we've made that night was the obligation to take care of the park, the plaza, and once the, the sculptor had left us with that, that wonderful piece of art, it would be our responsibility. That's it. You can't expect 22 men and women of a Rotary Club or 100 people of a VFW in a community of 57,000 folks with over 1,000 businesses to possibly maintain that alone. It's not done here, it's not done in any other community I've worked or served. It's a partnership. That's the period.
You're not asking us to maintain-
Trustee Quinlan, I'll give you the floor when he's done.
I, I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Quinlan, you have the floor.
That's my point. We're not talking about maintaining, that's a separate issue. We're talking about a piece of granite, part of it.
Good, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Trustee Vorder was next.
I just, I'd just like to make the comment, this project's been ongoing for how many years now? Three, four years?
Quite a while.
It isn't finished. I'm tired of going to 9/11 ceremonies to an unfinished project for whatever the reason. Now, you know, when I saw this on the agenda, I, I could have made a speech, a political speech about it all, but instead, I called the village manager and said, "What's this all about, and how does it work?" And the village manager explained, just as he did to me here, "And I, as a citizen and as an elected representative, want this memorial finished. It's almost a shame that we've waited four years to get it done. It's not truly commemorative of the people that have given so much. That memorial should have been done years ago, and of $35,000, which is coming out of a commuter lot fund and paid for possibly by bad guys in the future, okay, I'm thrilled to death. Let's get it done." That's all I have to say.
Trustee Carberry?
I just didn't, what I, the part I didn't understand is, where's the, where were we trying to hide something? I don't-
I could address that. I'd like to, actually.
I'm, uh-
That's a question, I mean-
Why politicize this? Call the vote. Do we want a memorial or not?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I'd like to call the vote, but first, I want to just say that this was a, a big dream by a lot of people, the dream expanded. The memorial we have in Oaklawn is the largest and most significant 9/11 memorial in the state of Illinois that I'm aware of and in the Midwest. We've researched communities, not a single community, even the city of Chicago, was gifted with as much steel as we have at that memorial site. We, we had the mindset to make it really special. It, it took on a life of its own, this will finish it. This is a regional memorial, this is not a community memorial. The guidelines that, that Larry spoke of, do allow for memorials of, of nature, you know, who knows? But, you know, I, I appreciate the support and the recognition by the community that this was something special, near and dear to an entire generation, and, you know, I thank you, and I'm going to call the vote.
And would I just say one more thing? We did win the Governor's Hometown Award, Mayor, well, she wasn't the mayor at the time, myself, Chief Villanova and Larry went down to Springfield, it was quite an honor that day, so, you know-
And I believe the police wanted to use those forfeiture dollars, it was not requested by anyone but the police, so, let's call the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
No.
Trustee Elanichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
No.
Motion passes 4-2.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on item 18. This is a request to approve a rug and art tent sale by Rugs to Go LLC in the Kmart parking lot at 4101 West 95th Street from August 8th through October 5th, 2014. This is in District 4. May have a motion, please, on item 18.
Motion to approve.
Properly moved by Trustee Vorder.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Carberry. Any discussion here? Any discussion here? Please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We're on to Item 19. Village Clerks Report. Jane, you have the floor.
Approval of Semi-Monthly Disbursements, Number 2014-11D, dated June 10th, 2014, in the amount of $5,997,682.43.
May I have a motion on 19A, please?
Motion to pay the bills.
Properly moved by Trustee Vorder, seconded by Trustee Carberry. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Motion passes. One more thing there.
I'm proud to announce that last Thursday, I was sworn in as the president of the South and West Clerks Association of Cook County, and that represents over 100 municipalities in the area. Big job. But the South and West organization makes up one quarter of the membership of the Illinois Municipal Clerks, so I'll do my best to represent the clerks and also the Village of Oaklawn. So, we have a big chunk of Illinois right here in our area, so we're proud of that. Thank you.
That's excellent. Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item 20, Village Presidents' Report. I have several items, and I'm just going to kind of pick through them, and I want to start by giving my sincere condolences to the family of a frequent commentator at our meetings, Mr. Ron Cap, passed away recently, and I don't know details, however, I do want to extend my deep condolences to the family. If you loved what he said or didn't, you always had to respect his desire to be a good citizen and partner in the Village of Oaklawn, and he will be missed. He will be missed. I want to talk a little bit. Vehicle stickers are available. We're super excited with the Shop Oaklawn theme. The Spring into Summer Event is going to be on the same day as the Bike Tour. That will be Saturday, June 21st, 2014. It'll run from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There's a pet parade, new car show, vendor fair, and a lot of free activities at 95th and Cook all day long, music and food for grownups, too. The live band will start at 6:00 p.m. That's awesome. Let's see here.
Mayor, is that the Neverly Brothers Band?
No, that's going to be one of the Village on the Green... It's the next one.
Okay.
Is that the Sunday, Jane?
They're excellent. They're really good.
Very good. Those are free also, and those start right at 7:00 o'clock on Sunday. So, I want to congratulate Debbie and our friends of the Cal-Sag Trail. Trustee Olenichik and I had the extreme pleasure and privilege to be in attendance at the groundbreaking for this. The Cal-Sag Trail is 26 miles long. It goes from Lamont to Burnham Harbor, and it started with, kind of like our memorial, a few people over pizza, talking about what would be a great idea, and 10 years later, $20 million in commitments. The trail broke ground, and we are so excited, so I just wanted to congratulate you. This trail is not in Oaklawn, but Oaklawn will find a way to that trail. We will connect to it somehow. So, congratulations. I want to lastly just update on the seniors' center. As many people have followed, the seniors are in a temporary home right now at the 105th Street, the former McGugan School. We've been looking earnestly for a new location. We are still looking, but since someone had an issue with me having quiet discussions before board presentations, I want to keep the entire board updated. I've been talking with the Oaklawn VFW. The VFW is in the center of town, which is a criteria that many people, including the seniors, liked. We're looking to consider the feasibility of an addition on the western aspect of that building, a small, modest addition and shared use of the common areas. It seems to be a very good fit. The VFW has been very, very happy to explore the conversation. I'm not getting any pushback from them. There's cautious questions, and, you know, we're feeling our way through the discussion, but I just wanted everyone to know that's super-duper exciting, and we'll hopefully have updates soon.